So I don't have my gavel, it's in DC. But the meeting will call to order. The time is now 5:30 PM on Monday, August 22, 2022. This is a special meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. The purposes of this meeting are, one, the consideration of a request from the Department of Small and Local Business Development for additional funding to support Art All Night 2022; and, two, a discussion of and planning for opportunities for increased involvement and participation in Art All Night 2022 by commissioners and staff. Notice of the meeting was posted on the commission's website, dcrts.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I'm an African-American man wearing a light blue shirt today. I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer. Stacy Lee Banks. Coramasses. Sorry? Oh, yes, yeah. Hi, Stacy, sorry. Coramasses Berry.
Here.
Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Quanise Floyd. Natalie Hopkinson. Kimberman Kitty. Mariah Rooney.
Present.
Carla Sims.
Present.
Hector Torres.
Present.
Gretchen Warden.
Present.
Good. We have a quorum. Thank you very much. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of the public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform and is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I'll now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nikotch Tank and the Piscataway people. We pay tributes and respects to the elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. As I said before, the agenda is focused on Art All Night. There are two items, as I said earlier. I'd like to reverse the order of the discussion because one of our commissioners needs to recuse herself because she's a part of the organization asking for funding. So let's start with the discussion of and planning for opportunities for increased involvement and participation at Art All Night 2022 by commissioners and staff. In conversations with a number of you, it's clear that Art All Night can be, should be, is a big deal for us as an arts commission. Historically, we funded it. People don't always even know of our involvement or our funding of it. We have different levels of presence in various places. So I'd like really to do a call to action for this year's Art All Night, which is September 23rd and 24th. Am I getting that right?
Yes.
Yes. And to have a booth, a table, some sort of physical display manned by commissioners and staff. In each of the wards, as I understand it, there's an opportunity somewhere in the program for a speaking. So I'd like us to make a very brief speech about the Arts Commission. We will help draft those scripts for you and try to customize them to the ward in which you're in. We'd like very much for the commissioners that live in those wards to participate and represent that as well as staff. So whereas before, we certainly did funding and we had some level of participation and visibility, we want to make a big deal of it this year. And so we really, really need you all to find the time to be there. You don't have to be there the whole time, but to find the time to be there, to pair up, commissioners to pair up with staff, and for us to be there, make a presentation or a speech, and then if we can, manned tables or booths or something to do that as well. So I wanted to get your reactions to that, to see if there's something that you agree we should do, do we have the wherewithal to do it, et cetera. So reactions? And hi, Natalie, welcome.
I think it's a great idea. We've participated with our shop for the last five or six years. And we have, last year, we had over 600 people come in our shop to make flower crowns, and it was a great success. And so it's grown over the years as far as that. My dilemma is I live in War Three. My shop is in War One. I don't know how I could be, you know, be in War Three and be here. But I would love to, I would speak on behalf of the commission in either place. I don't know if we have any representatives from War Three.
I need to check that. At this moment, given that we're down to 11, I don't think we have representatives in all the wards necessarily, but we can do trade-offs. I mean, we can do some swaps. You don't have to live in the ward to be there to represent the commission. That would be nicer. But I think, given your presence there of owning the shopping ward one, that also qualifies for you to be there at Ward One as well. We can work that offline. But I'm glad you agree with the notion of what we're going to do. And hi, Quanise, I say.
Oh, absolutely.
Sorry, Stacy, you were saying something?
I was just saying, I wholeheartedly agree with more funding and playing a bigger role in the Art All Night.
So I apologize in advance when I become that aggressive executive secretary that's staffing you all to be in these places. But I really, really hope that we can have a full showing, a full, strong showing of us. And it's good for us as well because I don't know if people even know who all the commissioners are or who some of us are and what we can do. And for us to get feedback from people when we're there, we can get feedback as well. So it's a big community engagement opportunity for us. And so I hope we all embrace it aggressively. Other reactions other than Stacy?
Yeah. Go on.
I apologize. This is Hector. I just wanted to know if there is a schedule of sorts that is available that could be shared?
Yes.
Because, you know, September 23rd or 24th is just around the corner. And one has made commitments, like I have a board retreat for another organization. So it's important to know how you could manage your schedule. I would definitely like to participate, at least on the, one of the evenings, but I need more time before I could actually commit. And yes, I'm committed to help if and when I have the time available.
So David, can you help us with getting that schedule? I know some of them are probably still evolving, things haven't been finalized. But that which we know, if we can get that out to people and start attaching names to events, that would be great.
Yep, no problem. The Friday evening, the 23rd, is a little bit lighter in terms of programming. There's not an event. There are not events across the entire city. The Saturday evening is traditionally then the main Art All Night. So, but I'll share that with.
Well, I also want to add that I think there's, some people are thinking a little ahead of you, Reggie, because as you well know, obviously, the Main Street people in Ward Eight, Congress Heights, has asked Reggie to be one of the, well, the grand marshal, basically, in their Congress Heights Day Parade that leads into Art All Night. And asked, well, actually, they sent letters and invited all of the commissioners to ride in the car, but they didn't get a response back. And they told me they didn't get a response back, so they called me and asked me for Reggie's number so they could, I mean, email so they could send it directly to him, but they didn't get one. So I'm guessing maybe they sent it to Heron's email, maybe. Maybe that might be what happened. So I'm not sure. But they want to acknowledge and lift up the support that the Arts Commission has given and give it more visibility. So I think that's a good step.
Personally, I would love for as many of the commissioners as possible. It's only like a two-hour block, so we can all still participate in that parade and then go to our other places that we're going to be representing and speaking. So we'll coordinate that. We'll get that information around to everybody so that I won't be on the float by myself. Though, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but.
No, I don't think you do. But David, did you get anything from them?
I did not, no.
Should I direct them to you to send the communication?
Yeah, sure. That would be great. Thank you.
Great. Any other reactions? Certainly, anyone who has an issue or concern, please raise it now, or advice or anything like that.
This is Gretchen. I think it's a great idea. I personally will not be able to commit because for the first time, we Shaw Main Streets are participating in our primary event at Bannaker High School. So I am committed to being there every moment until 3:00 AM.
And that'll be your representation there, then?
Yep.
That counts. That counts. But perhaps we could deploy somebody else if there's a speaking opportunity, otherwise, or a booth or something. And again, we want this to be a partnership between the staff and the commissioners. And the staff have done.
I'll be speaking at the Shaw event.
Right.
Because our main, our main location is Bannaker High School this year.
Good. Well, then you're checking the box already. We need you to coordinate now with the staff and other things you're doing. So I will take this as an acclamation that this is something that we want to do this year especially, but perhaps all years going forward. And so we'll move ahead with that planning. David and I will partner in getting commissioners and staff connected to particular opportunities as they evolve. Anything else on that topic?
Just, Reg, this is Brian speaking. Good evening, all. My name is Brian Ayende. I'm the Resource Allocation Officer. I'm wearing a blue shirt this evening. Just wanted to give some context or a little bit of history for the last three years. So now we're moving from a posture of being a sponsor in this event to a partner. So there's a very different role that we're playing. And so perhaps that might be part of the reason why the commission may not have received the level of acknowledgement that it's seeking. But I can just say for the last couple of years, that's what it was. And I'll leave it there because I don't know how this event will grow in future years. It does look like it's growing exponentially. The only other thing that I can offer is that CAH has increased its funding each year since 2019, since I've been here, where we've given like from $100,000 to $200,000. And we've always looked at our budget towards the end of the fiscal year for any funding that we had available to assist when it was requested. So we've always been an active partner or sponsor, however you want to look at it.
Good. Other comments on that? Before we go to the next topic and before Gretchen has to recuse or leave the topic, the next topic is going to be a vote or discussion and then a vote on us increasing our funding to the DSLBDD. I can't remember all the acronyms, but I think that is just the beginning of the increase in funding that we could consider in future years. I understand that some wards are very aggressive in driving economic development, driving cultural development, driving social development in what they do. And there's a concern that if everybody, if every ward gets the exact same amount of money, but they deliver different impacts, we should find a way to reflect increased funding for people who need to pay for street closures because they have such a large crowd, need to pay for additional curatorial staff because they want to curate something special there, need to pay for additional space because they are driving economic development in some sort of way. You know, I don't know the particulars of it. So though it's clearly too late this year because we're so close to the event, we should think about where might we want to be yet more helpful to Main Street organizations that are trying to do interesting things that align with our mission and where our funding could be of additional help to them. So we need to think through that. For today, for tonight, the topic is just about this increase in funding for the sort of citywide organization. But know that we will have further discussions and try to prepare next year to perhaps do yet more. So before we go to the topic of that vote and before Gretchen has to leave, any reactions to whether we are satisfied with the level of support we have engagement now? Might we be interested in this sort of dream that I just laid on the table? Hector?
May we just simply create a new category of funding source for, and call it Main Street Events, and look for the criteria that's going to fund them and predetermine a certain amount of dollars that would go to it on an annual basis so that we don't have to deal with it at, you know, season's end, but we are proactively looking to see how we could participate in exactly the manner you expressed it?
Yep.
Just to Gretchen, just a little bit of clarification. Our funding actually is transferred to DSLBDD, not to Main Streets. Main Streets are programs under the auspice of DSLBDD. So it's actually an intergovernmental transfer of money.
Yep. But I mean, to Hector's point, we could create a granting category that the Main Street people can ask for funding directly to, as opposed to having to go through, if we wish. And again, I don't know, I don't want us to debate to an answer today, but I wanted to put on the table that possibility so that even though today we're voting narrowly on just increasing funding for a citywide organization, we could, next year, think about something that more broadly addresses the needs of some of those organizations and how they can help continue with our mission, how they can help with our mission.
Yeah, I agree. We just have to make sure that that does not negate other funding from the government. So we need a lot of conversation around it.
Exactly.
But at least this can provide some kind of sustainable funding if we're thinking ahead and forward.
Yeah, well, we, there is sustainable, anyhow, we need more discussion. There is sustainable funding throughout the year from DSLBDD, not just for Art All Night. So we'll talk about it whenever Reggie wants to talk about it.
Yeah. And again, that's why I just wanted to introduce the topic, but I know it's a more fulsome discussion that we need to have.
Yeah, and I agree with Hector and with Gretchen. I think we should create, and again, we'll talk about it later, a category just for Art All Night and deal with that, depending upon what the impact is, how broad it is. You know, I hate to be, to brag, but you know, we have more than a mile of art in this and spoken word and it's amazing what we do over here. It's just amazing. I'm very impressed with it, and I think it's a model. So definitely, I want to talk about that.
So just so that everyone's clear, in the past or even up to this year, our participation has not been from grant dollars, it's been from contractual services dollars, okay? And just wanted to make that clear. But we always have that, we always have that as a line item in our budget when I'm doing the formulation, so.
And we could continue with that. We could create a grant, we can do whatever makes sense, right? And so that's why I want to introduce the topic now so we can then go away and think about all the possibilities and what do we really want to do. But if there was great resistance to it, I would just table it. But I see some energy around it. And so somewhere, either in the Grants Committee or elsewhere, we need to think about preparing for what we may want to do next year. Any other discussion on that?
Reggie, I'm sorry. Can you just tell me what DSL, I don't know what that acronym stands for?
It's the Department of Small and Local Business Development.
Yes, okay, fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Department of Small and Local Business Development. That's my cheat sheet that Jeff gave me. Thank you, Jeff. So if no other discussion on that, I think Gretchen, we can excuse you, and we can go into the last part of the agenda, which is a discussion of this request from the Department of Small and Local Business Development and then a decision. Thank you, Gretchen.
Bye-bye.
So David, do you want to take us through the request? I know you sent a memo to all of us on it, so perhaps you can best describe what it is and what we might propose to do.
Yes. So the MOU for this current year is a total of $200,000, which is an increase from $150,000 last year. DSLBDD has asked us to enhance that MOU by 42.5%, which is a, I suppose, $85,000. So our commitment this year would be $285,000. And we asked them for a breakdown of how they might use the monies. And I don't know if, is this just a history of DSLBDD or where have they? Is, Patrick, are you, do you have this up on the screen or is it Brian? I'm not sure. Okay, it's Patrick.
Yes, that's me. I can scroll down if you want.
Thanks. The, they, and Jeff can jump in on this because he had some, you know, he met with the folks from DSLBDD along with me and Brian, who's in one of those meetings. The majority of funds they want are for marketing and PR, costs associated with the entire, entire event. Thanks. So you'll see there the third item down, $40,000 for event marketing and advertising. They would also like, you know, support for, in the amount of $32,000 for street closures, that type of thing, and MPD support around the event. And then the other two items are t-shirts and the cost of a videographer totaling $85,000.
And not to be too parochial, but is there an opportunity for us to get some co-branding in those t-shirts that we're paying for?
We better. We should. We have the, you know, the branding of it currently is Mayor Muriel, "Bows and Presents Art All Night" with the agencies, you know, underneath it. So we've always been on there. It's just a question of how big our logo is in relation sometimes.
Yep. I mean, once again, that is a bit parochial, but if we're paying for t-shirts, we should consider whether we want to have some advantage branding on it. I wouldn't make them do it, but I would certainly see if that's something they'd be amenable to.
Yeah.
Well, if we're, as, 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 Brian, we're segueing from, from, what do you call it?
Partnership to partnership.
From partnership, then that makes sense. But are we there yet? Are we partners yet or are we planning that for next week, next year? Our level of funding hasn't actually changed, and even this won't change it. It'll just extend it to the new groups, right? But nobody will get any more than they got before, right?
That's a good question, Cora. The, and something that we've talked about moving forward, we would like for DSLBDD to provide us with a comprehensive report as to how CAH dollars have been spent. You know, how much, how many of them are used for sort of some of the overhead items that DSLBDD incurs, and how many of the dollars go directly to the individual Main Streets and then again into the hands of artists. So once we, you know, if the monies are approved, you know, I anticipate going back to DSLBDD and with sort of a request that comes with the $85,000. So I think we can enhance any of these pieces here with our own requests in how, as to how the money is, might be spent, so.
I think Hector had his hand up, maybe?
Yes. With respect to the branding issue, there is a marked difference between the perception of a grantor, you know, grant giver or versus a partnership. And that's a fine line that can actually put us in different view or perspective. So I think that the perception should be that we are a partnership because in essence, by doing so, we are giving pretty much, you know, a huge lion's share of the funding because it'll total $285,000. So we are in a position, we can ask for that simply because we want to, as I mentioned, we want to take credit for it, it shows that we want to get the credit to us for that.
Exactly, exactly. So again, I'm not trying to, you know, take, usurp anybody's authority or any of that sort of stuff, but if we're going from 285,000, that should somehow show in the branding. That's all I'm saying.
I agree wholeheartedly.
I'm not disagreeing with that as a whole number, but as an individual number for each of the organizations that's doing this, I don't think it's going to, well, David can tell us, but I don't know if it's going to move the needle because you're talking about increasing money, but also increasing, what, 20 more organizations? Is that what's happening, David?
So, and every year, the event grows and there are more, you know, Main Streets participating. The piece that we don't know is, you know, if we give DSLBDD this $85,000, does that free up money elsewhere so that other money they have in their budget can be directed to the Main Streets? Or is this money that they, they just don't have and they need? And so the, the, the impact on the individual Main Streets will be negligible. We don't know. So that's a conversation we need to have with them, so.
Ask a question. The fact that it's being done in a way of intra-district transfer versus a, how would you say, rather than a transfer, basically a sponsorship, I know this is just a matter of words, but it makes a difference as to how well we could manage, you know, what we're looking for in terms of being supportive of the arts and that recognition being given. Because the money is being invariably passed out by this organization, not us. So, you know, that, that has got to be made clear to some extent to give us the due credit. And I think the issue lays in the fact that we're doing a, basically a transfer to them, and they're managing it, which is okay if that's the way the business is run, but generally, we have greater, like, shall I say, influence if we are in a position to grant directly.
Well, and when CAH ran this event, when it first expanded citywide, we were the executive producer for two years, and we did grant directly to the participating Main Streets. There was only five back then. But when we switched to DSLBDD, part of the reason was DSLBDD already has a grant relationship with the Main Streets, you know, they get grant funding from them. So it was thought an easier process to do the intra-district transfer to DSLBDD, and then they could put it in their existing pipeline of grants to the Main Streets. So that's, that's just where it came from.
Understood, but it still doesn't give us the marketing recognition that perhaps we're seeking. Because it's a very different scenario five years ago than what currently exists.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, that, that scenario has got to be put forth and clearly, you know, to say that this is a very different structure that we currently have and responsibility that we have in terms of the arts. So I mean, this is something that can be had as a great conversation in terms of how we would like to see it, you know, and it's just merely the recognition of the partnership.
And there is an MOU in place, and Rob and our legal counsel is working on an amendment to the MOU. So I think we can work together with DSLBDD to build out that amendment or the content of that amendment, so.
I mean, do we all feel comfortable with that? I mean, you know, as a discussion, you know?
So if I could just give one point to consider to everyone here. As was already stated, we're moving towards that direction of a partnership. And so at this late state, I, I mean, the terms to which we, if we extended the additional $85,000 can be outlined in the intra-district agreement, that would be fine. But as pertaining to the stipulation that it'd be more geared towards a partnership versus the sponsorship, it might be a little bit late. And maybe, might be easier to just going forward, since this is already an agreement that we've had in perpetuity. That's just a thought for everyone to consider.
But they're also asking for the funds late as well. So I mean, that is just a matter of, okay, we do this for that. You know, there's some kind of quick, quick progression. I know that sounds awful, but you know, just as a matter of saying, okay, great. You know, we're doing this if we want to, and we're happy. However, blah, blah, blah.
I think we've made the point, right? And so let's move ahead in the way that makes the most sense. So are we ready to call a motion?
Quanise has her hand up, I think.
Quanise, sorry.
No, I was just kind of going with what you were saying, Reggie. I'm trying to move the mindset away from transactional, you know, transactions versus actual partnership. Like, if we really want to do something and really think through this partnership, it should be transformational, it shouldn't be transactional, because that, to me, is not sufficient. Because the vision that Reggie and the rest of the commissioners have put forth talks about making sure that we are bringing together this entire ecosystem to build a holistic community, right, within, through arts and culture. And so I just want to make sure that we're not pushing towards transaction because oftentimes, when you have relationships that are transactional, it doesn't end well. We need to start thinking about how we can move beyond the transaction and really think through partnerships. So I would love to be a part of those future conversations around partnership versus transaction.
Great.
Bravo. I agree a hundred percent.
Yes. Um, so are we ready for the resolution? I can read it. I guess somebody would have to move it otherwise. Resolve that the commission agreed to the intra-district transfer of an additional eighty-five thousand dollars. To the Department of Small and Local Business Development to support the twenty twenty-two Art All Night revi- festival. And that the addendum to the memorandum of understanding between the commission and DSLBD regarding this matter. Include an obligation for DSLBD to include expenditures of CH funds in the final report for the event. That's the resolution as written. Somebody move that?
I move it. Chairman Danley.
Second?
Second.
I will now take the vote. Uh, Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Kimber? Mariah?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
So it is unanimous. Gretchen's not here. Kimber's not here and I don't vote. So it passes. So let's proceed with uh, doing this funding as we've decided here. So I thank you all. I'm sorry to have an August meeting when I say we wouldn't, but so far it's run one hour and one minute. No, it's run, it's run thirty-one minutes. I'm sorry. It's run thirty-one minutes. We signed it at five-thirty. Uh, we have no other business for us. Thank you all for your time. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy rest of the summer.
Happy summer, everybody.